Seeing that it's 3:30 and I think Mr. Greenway just running a few minutes.
He is on his way, yeah, some traffic.
Weather traffic, okay.
Let's start to make some decisions.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do the bird presentation now. All right.
There he is, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
Hello, hello.
So.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's all right, ma'am.
I think y'all even sabotaged that and then rang.
So, yeah, right, right.
We always want to give you more of everything.
All right. Well, we just want to welcome everybody to.
You should blame him if he wasn't.
Want to welcome everybody to our Tuesday, May 4th, uh, Rona County School Board Work Session. So, uh, with that being said, we'll jump right into informational items. And first up on the agenda is feasibility.
You want to call it an order?
Oh, yeah, let's call it an order. Go ahead and miss, uh, Angela, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Buckser?
Here.
Mr. Linden?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Greenway?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Farx?
Yes, ma'am. All right. Let's jump right into informational items. First up on the agenda is the feasibility of Burton Center on Cove Road site. And we have with us today, Mr. Ben Motley from RRMM. Welcome.
All right. Good afternoon. I am Ben Motley, Senior Partner and Architect with RRMM. What's your protocol? Should I keep the mask on or off?
Fine with me.
Take it off?
You can take it off.
You're fine. If it helps you speak, go for it.
Okay. So, our topic today is a feasibility study update for the Cove Road site. And we'll actually give a little history. Um, this is a diagram of, let me see, I'm gonna go to old technology here. This, of course, we're in this building right now. There's Glen Cove Elementary. And the, actually, the boundary is a continuous thirty-four acre site. That's the Cove Road site. We've actually, uh, it was actually about fourteen months ago, working with Chris Low, we actually were looking at two components of the site. One was the Glen Cove Elementary School site in specific, and then the central office site where we are now. Now, it's very interesting, even though that this is thirty-four acres, actually, these, there's a, there's some pretty strong features on the site that create essentially two separate sites. Glen Cove's site is really about eleven point seven five acres of usable area. And the central office site is really only about nine point four acres of usable area. And that's because of these strong topographic features. There's essentially a strong ravine through here, and really significant drop-offs of topography on these edges in this location. A little bit of history. One of the things we were to look at at Glen Cove was, could you build a new elementary school on the Glen Cove site while the existing school is occupied? And then eventually tear down the existing school and move into the new school. And this, um, this, this actually, the site worked out very well to be able to do that. Uh, we came up with multiple concepts. We provided a letter report last year. This is just an example. This shows where the existing building would be. This is Cove Road. And it shows how you could do a new facility, handle the parking, the ball fields. Not only could you do it in various options, but you could do it quite well. It's one thing to say that it's feasible to do a project. It's another thing for it to actually function really well. In our opinion, it could function quite well, and actually produce, uh, school designs that have excellent solar orientation for daylighting and so forth. And we, we actually provided, uh, three different concepts that could have been used for that purpose. Um, and again, that's not the main purpose of our, our meeting today, but I just wanted to do that as a reminder. Now, also, about a year ago, we had started to look at the impact of using this site here for a CTE, the Burton, the BCAT facility while the existing offices were here. And this was a very preliminary diagram that we did that said, all right, if you have your existing central office right here, which is about fifty-four thousand square feet, and you just tried to fit in a standalone CTE center with some space around it for service yards and parking and so forth, it would only yield about sixty-six thousand square feet of floor area in this portion of the site. And at that time, the BCAT facility was requesting about a hundred and fifteen thousand square feet. So, right off the bat, there were red flags saying, hmm, the feasibility of this site, especially for both operations, central office and a CTE facility, is highly questionable. And we basically said, at this point, really, more study is needed. You've got to kind of, let's look at what the program would really need to be for the offices and so forth. And right about that time was when, uh, the pandemic hit and kind of the brakes were put on everything. And then a couple of months ago, speaking with Mr. Low, again, we kind of restarted the study. Now, um, a few things about the site here. So, this is rotated a little bit differently just to be able to fit on the page. The reason, again, that you only have about nine point four acres usability, again, is because of these strong topographic features that are here. The other thing is, is we say it's really optimistically nine point four acres because, because of the shape of this site. I mean, it's really hard to use pieces of land like this. I mean, they can be used for some parking and so forth, but it's just not a very efficient shape in terms of the land. Um, now, oh, one other thing, too, in talking with, uh, Mr. Low, we made some assumptions. We made some assumptions that because of other topographic features that are on this edge, and because of the, the investment that's already in the existing warehouse and parking, that we would consider that a boundary. So, even in this consideration, we're already looking at, you know, possibly impacting the existing IT building. Now, let's take a look at a few other pieces of data. This is a Google Earth image of the existing BCAT site. Uh, it just happens to be oriented the way it is because north is, is always up when you're looking on Google Earth unless you rotate it. Now, that particular site, the usable area right now, if you kind of take the edge of the wooded area and the floodplain through there, is about thirteen point five acres. So, you're using thirteen point five acres now, and we're about to try to consider a way to try to get that facility greatly expanded onto a nine point four acre site that also has central offices. You can start to see the problem. It's just a much smaller bag that's trying to get a lot more stuff in it. If we take, if you take, this is, see the buildings here? Take the buildings, and now we're going to actually rotate the image, and at the same scale, apply the existing BCAT facility, which is only about eighty-nine thousand square feet, by the way. And we're going to lay it over top of the, the school board site here. And you can see, it doesn't even fit within, really, in the boundaries of what you have. And that is, you know, remember, you've got your fifty-four thousand square feet of office area underneath, so that's just totally covered the top of that. So, again, it starts to make the point about the challenge that's associated with using the site. Now, don't take this literally, please, as a building diagram, but this is just an exercise we went through to try to see how much stuff really needs to try to fit on this site. And we made some assumptions. We said, all right, when, when the BCAT folks redid their program, they identified those areas that they thought had to be on a first floor, right? Because, uh, CTE facilities, there, there are several things that have to be on a main level just because of access to service yards and the nature of what they're serving. So, we took all of that square footage that they said had to be on the first floor, and it's a reasonable request. And then we took the rest of the area that they said could be on the second floor, but because of the nature of CTE programming, it's not very feasible to put, for example, to put space on top of an automotive lab. It's not that you can't do it, it's just not very cost-effective, right? Because you have lots of clear span areas, you have high bays. If you start trying to put floors on top of spaces like that, it's generally not very effective or cost-effective. So, again, when you took all of those areas that had to be on the first floor, or really will need to be just because of the nature of the construction, we ended up with a first-floor footprint of a hundred and sixty thousand, one hundred square feet. So, that's what this big, kind of, pink area represents. Now, the, so, there's that. Then in gray, we kind of just took all the parking requirements. So, we're taking all the parking requirements for the BCAT, plus the parking requirements for the central office. And then we looked at the requirements for the service yards. And it, everything is just, you know, it's right at the edges. And then we took, again, this is kind of very optimistically thinking, we took the square footage of this building, and we said, okay, this is a converted school, right? It's probably, it's a, it's a, it's a school that became an office facility, essentially. There's probably a lot of efficiencies that could be obtained here. So, we said, all right, we're going to take eighty-five percent of that area, and we're also going to say, if we had to, we could make it, you know, a three-story office building is a common occurrence. You could take that. So, this blue just represents if you took the entire central office function and created into an efficient office-type environment in three stories. So, with all of that said, it still is just pushing at the edges at the site. But here's the thing that can be very deceiving about this diagram. You might even start to say, oh, well, it might fit. Well, not really. And that's because you would not design a CTE center that's just one huge block. You know, buildings, um, that are big blocks are, are regressive in their design. Uh, we're gonna, I'm going to show you some examples and the importance of having open space in any current design. We, uh, we just won a, a major high school renovation in Frederick County last week, and I showed them this diagram. This is, this is a big high school up in Frederick County, and it's, it's much like this building. It was designed as just a big block. We would not design any facility like that today. And they were looking at an expansion that just kind of continued the size of this big block. But we're saying, no, a modern building that's going to take advantage of natural light and things of that nature needs to be much more leggy, you know, wing-like, giving, so this is a, a recent middle school. You can see wings and things like that are nature. You need open space in a building, not only for natural light, but especially for a CTE facility that's going to need access, so much access to the outside. And especially when you think about, think about one, what's one of the major concerns for anybody that operates or programs a CTE facility? And that is, programs are already chang, always changing. So, you want to inherently design in flexibility. And if you just put yourself in a big box, that's just going to reduce your flexibility. When you provide open space and breathing room, when you provide legs, it gives you that opportunity for flexibility for the future. Here's another example. We just happened to grab one. This is, um, this is a major CTE expansion to Franklin County High School that we planned. And you can see the amount of green space and service yards and things of that nature, access roads that are needed. Uh, buildings, buildings need to breathe. They need, they need space in between. They need courts and security and private access and things of that nature. Um, in fact, even in the BCAT program, they mentioned the importance of having outdoor space that is secure. So, those are just some examples. And for CTE facilities, having things like maybe covered outdoor build space where a variety of disciplines can come together and build, you know, a project together. So, so, let's take a look, then, at these vitals, what, I call this the, kind of, the vital statistics sheet. It's kind of very telling. Your existing building, BCAT facility, is somewhere between eighty-four and eighty-nine thousand gross square feet. The reason we gave that range is because there's some conflicting data about its size. Uh, but, anyway, close enough for the moment. Existing parking spaces are one seventy-eight. Again, the existing acreage is thirteen point five usable. And again, the optimistic figure for here is nine point four. Now, the program request from the BCAT is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty square feet net. You've got to multiply that by some factor to get your gross square footage. And we, for CTE facilities, we normally see that factor right there, so it's a fairly good predictor. So, we're looking at over two hundred and ten thousand square feet of facility. So, then you add that to the building size that's here. Maybe we can get it a little more efficient. So, we're looking at a total of two hundred and fifty-four thousand-plus square feet on this campus. All right. So, what's the problem? We had about less than ninety thousand square feet on thirteen and a half acres. Now, we're trying to put a quarter million square feet on nine point four acres. The bottom line is right here, it's about, by the time you consider parking and all those things, it's three times the building area on a thirty percent smaller site. What we're trying to get to is, from conventional parameters, we would consider this to be not feasible, not a good choice. That doesn't mean that you couldn't do it, that there's not a way, but when you look at the expenses that would be involved to try to make this feasible, and the lack of flexibility you would have, it just, it just doesn't make any sense. So, what we thought we'd do, I'll pause for questions, and then we, we had a few thoughts about next steps. We'll see if there's any questions so far.
You said a hundred and seventy-eight parking spaces that currently.
Yes.
BCATs. What is the recommendation for two hundred and ten thousand square feet?
Uh, by the time you combine the office here and, and BCAT, it was three hundred and sixty spaces.
Three sixty.
Other questions?
Yes.
I had a couple. One is that in that, uh, picture you drew, there also wasn't a.
Retaining area, retaining pond area. I'm assuming you'd have to have that on the map as well.
Well, that, that's a good point. If we go, well, we could go to there. That, that ravine is a large collector for stormwater, and there may be a regional.
A way to get it off.
With that.
And then, secondly, this is off-topic, just a hair, but you said Franklin County, is that something they're doing now? Or is that our Franklin County?
They have not funded that.
Okay.
I know they've been talking about it for several years.
There weren't that many.
A lot of places comes down to funding.
Yeah, we've been talking with that, with them about that since two thousand twelve.
Uh-huh. Right.
Well, so have we.
Sometimes it takes a while.
No, I was just going to ask the Franklin County district.
Yeah.
One of the things that we looked at when, uh, when Ben met with us, uh, last week was, you know, the, the programming that we've done, you know, looking at, uh, you know, a replacement for Burton Center. Um, are there, are there things there that were sort of on a wish list kind of things? It could be scaled back? And so, I know, uh, Chris and the, well, Jason, Sir, and, um, Mark and Christian have gone back and looked at that and, um, found some things, but we're not talking about anything significant, about thirty thousand square feet.
Yeah, at the most, about thirty thousand square feet. They were able to take off their, their, their wish list square footage to, to.
Is this the time to scale back, though? I mean, if we're, if, you know.
No, well, exactly. And we're not talking about things that were, should be scaled back.
You were doing that, trying to see if you could accommodate.
Fit it on the space.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And that's still not going to make this site feasible, in our opinion.
Even if you took all of Central and moved these folks ten miles away, this site still won't work for it.
I don't believe so. And give you the kind of flexibility.
Right.
Because this is a, this is a major facility. Uh, even if you remove that square footage, it's still a major facility. It really should have more like twenty acres plus.
Well, and you're talking about the box more, like, you don't even have the leg examples that you were having.
That's right.
So, you're really defeating the purpose of the availability to get cars, you know, equipment, things that they ought to have, materials in, you know, for learning. So, you know.
You don't want to put ten pounds of sand in a five-pound bag, right?
A good way to put it.
That's a good way to put it.
So, with that in mind, we just, we just thought we'd offer a few thoughts for next steps. For one, if you were just to think of the order of magnitude of cost that's associated with a two hundred and ten thousand dollar, two hundred and ten thousand square feet, uh, facility, I don't know. Troy, you could argue this, but, you know, three hundred dollars a square foot's probably a decent placeholder. You know, uh, sixty-three point two million in hard cost, normally use a, a hard cost, a soft cost factor of point eight on a project like this. So, it's a order of magnitude. This is, without even addressing the office issues, the central office, it's about, if you do the math there, that's seventy-nine million.
Mr. Motley, one, one quick question. Does that three hundred square, three hundred dollars a square foot take into account the new cost for materials? Or is that based off of?
That's kind of a, that's kind of a today price.
Historic, okay.
Yeah.
So, that, that does take into the, or, or is that historical?
You're talking about the construction increase over the last seven months? I would say that, that number is not adequate.
That's not in there, okay. I'm just curious, because that can change that seventy-nine.
Yeah, it, it certainly could. Yeah. And what, and, you know, this is a, typically the type of project that takes years to be developed, and what will the number be then? Will there be some price correction between now and then? Who knows?
Hopefully.
But just again, it's, it's not a twenty million dollar project, right? It just, it starts to give you an order of magnitude. So, what, what about next steps? What, what would probably make sense is, you know, go through the process of verifying the BCAT program. You know, agree with what's important and maybe what isn't. And what you could do is then create design concepts based on that that serve as kind of a template for you to consider, you know, other sites, to test other sites that you might, might look at and so forth. So, that's what, what we don't think it makes sense to pay us, for example, to continue to examine this site. We just don't think it's going anywhere.
Is there an estimate in, in, that you would need amount of acreage for something like two hundred and ten thousand square feet? I mean, what is, what would be the acreage that would be that you would need?
Um, I would start minimum with like twenty acres usable. But then that's why, again, we say, we recommend, maybe you do some, create some design concepts that really have the kind of facility and the kind of exterior spaces that you're looking for, that then you can really refine the amount of acreage that's needed. And here's the thing, always, when it comes to acreage, remember there's a difference between usable acreage and total acreage.
So, so, one of the questions we asked last week to that point was, look at the existing BCAT site. Given the way this facility needs to expand with the floodway and floodplain that's there, I mean, uh, you know, any, any thoughts of rebuilding there really off the table as well?
Well, you would have to, you'd have to take those ball fields, I think, at the very least. But even then, you should look at it carefully.
And the ball fields are in the floodway, which you can't build, can you? You'd have to build it up.
Right.
Yeah, that, that would certainly require some study there.
I think if we study inside them, we ought to, we need to come back to Rona County where it was.
Well, you know, that's probably not a feasible thing at that site, anyway.
Uh, uh, that's why I thought it was important to ask that question, because the desire is concerned to get it into Rona County. But even if we took that off the table, it's really not a good site.
It's still won't work there. Yeah, that's good. So, we've got to find, so, really, at twenty acres, you're probably talking twenty-five to thirty. Would that be a fair for usable space?
In this part of the world, that's, it, it can easily be that.
Unless you've got a flat spot.
Yeah. I mean, we often have, we, we have, we live in a lumpy area, right? So, ravines and stormwater management, all those issues can eat up a land area, a lot of land area real quick.
That's why this needs to be a grand thing, but I don't, like you say, where do we have twenty-five, thirty acres?
This will be our one shot.
Yeah. Where do we have twenty-five or thirty acres? Otherwise, it would be an industrial site, so.
Yep.
Or should be. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ben?
Uh, good affirmation. Thank you.
We appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thanks for letting us be involved.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay.
And, and I just wanted to compliment Chris and his team and RRMM, because it's easy for somebody to say, sometimes say, this site won't work, but this is the way you draw the conclusion with data and facts and not conjecture, and so, it's good work. Are you going to be done?
Yeah, you have to test it.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't think we have an idea. I feel we have a better.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep. What we're looking for from a potential location and.
Yeah.
Mark this off for this.
Excellent. Good job.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate you. Next up on the agenda, we have a, um, update or renovation progress presentation for Bird from Mr. Troy Smith.
All right.
General Schumate from Hughes.
Hey.
Partner in.
Welcome. Mr. Greenway's been looking.
Yeah, when it's done, you have to invite me back. I want to see you.
Tim, are you smiling under that?
I'm smiling.
You can see his eyes.
They're sparkling.
I don't know, I've never heard anybody say that, but yeah.
Call them on it once.
Many moons ago.
Yeah. First day.
A little bit like, uh, the band setting up.
Sure.
Doesn't go in there. That's why. Thank you.
I was waiting for you to do yours first.
Don't know if you're going to get in trouble these days.
Want me to begin? So, I'm, I'm Troy Smith with Davis Construction, and this is Earl Schumate with Hughes and Associates. Um, several of you have already seen this overall site plan. Uh, just for information purposes, the trailers are still going back here. We've actually managed to get twelve of them to fit. Um, we met the fire marshal and the building official out there two weeks ago and kind of confirmed some, some layout and some distances between them. Um, and so, the site plan with the actual trailer layout was submitted to Rona County two weeks ago, so, or two and a half weeks ago, so they already had that. This is not exactly, this is just representative of where they're going. We're actually going to put a toilet trailer, um, right here in this location, because we can tie into an existing water line and the existing sewer. So, cleaning them every night, they should remain much cleaner with water going to them and them going into a sewer rather than filling up and having a tank that has to get empty periodically. Um, one of the other things that we're going to do initially is the third serving line in the cafeteria that's not used is going to be converted to bathrooms. And Tammy had indicated there were some students that had some issues with using mobile trailers. So, we're going to hit those pretty hard this summer and have those available close to the start of school. So, those bathrooms here are also available to, to kids and staff in the trailers, since a lot of the kids will probably be coming out of the cafeteria to get to those trailers.
Yeah, we have a nightmare.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and she indicated there were a few students that.
And if you connect to the sewer, that's wonderful.
Yeah, that, that, that'll help and, and be beneficial. Um, that's kind of the site, uh, side of things. We were going to run through a few slides and let Earl hit some of the highlights on the, uh, on the design and what we're doing in some of the spaces, and then we'll finish up throwing darts at me about price and schedule.
Thanks, Troy. As Troy said, I'm Earl Schumate. I'm with Hughes Associates Architects and Engineers here in Roanoke. Um, and we started meeting with the staff and faculty back in November to really confirm the program, what they needed. We met with each of the departments, um, in the auditorium, socially distant, and really got a lot of input from them as to what they really needed. And it did help to confirm, um, some of the initial programming that had been done. So, our philosophy behind this is to make it look and feel like a new school without building you a new school. And so, uh, the way that we're going to do that is through a series of infill additions, some major renovations and reshuffling of spaces, and then a, a general update of all the finishes in the building, all the casework. in the building, all the casework, HVAC systems, electrical, plumbing, et cetera. So there are three infill additions. This one here goes between the science world languages wing, and it's for arts. It'll have a choir room on the first floor, some new additional language classrooms on the first floor, and then art studios on the second floor. This is a two-story atrium space right here, which will bring natural light a little bit deeper into the building, because as Mr. Motley said, normally we wouldn't have a big block of buildings, but we're working with what, kind of with what we have. We'll also be adding an elevator in that section to serve this end of the school. Their current elevator, which will be renovated, is all the way down here, at an area that's really not that accessible. So we're adding that. Second infill addition is in this courtyard, which will be to create a gymnasium multipurpose space for wrestling and cheer practice. As most of you know, sports are very, very important at William Byrd High School as part of their community. And so we recognize that fact, and so we've tried to set it up so that we've got excellent sports facilities and a lot of flexible spaces for them. So this is a two-story wrestling and cheer gym. Third infill addition is here. It's an expanded weight room, something that they need. And, and one of the things that came out of our discussions with faculty was that during the pandemic, people, some of their students who would never have thought about taking FS Ed are now really into thinking about being fit, since they've spent so much time at home and haven't been able to get outside, so.
Can you point out the current locker room, where it's relative to?
The current locker rooms are right here. And then their locker rooms here.
The girls, the, yeah, the girls at the bottom?
Yeah, the girls are at the bottom.
Okay.
And those were just renovated. We're really not doing much of anything in there except replacing the, the light fixtures. They were already. One of the, the big issues and one of the big projects at the school, which is not, you know, anything that you'll see that's pretty, but it, we're adding a complete sprinkler system to the school, which makes it a much safer place. The sprinklers were added in, in, to the locker rooms and during the last renovation, but they were not connected. So we're going to be bringing in a whole new system there.
Earl, can I clarify two things? You mentioned the, the new wrestling room. The other high schools have a separate wrestling room. This is actually something that Byrd does not currently have. So this is kind of getting them up to a level playing field with the other schools. Same thing with, you mentioned a new choir room. Byrd High School, believe it or not, does not even have a choir room. So this is, this is something that is not replacing an existing one. This is actually building one that does not currently exist.
Yeah.
If I, if I could talk to you about the weightlifting room, it's really not as much an expansion of the weightlifting room as much as we're adding restrooms up along the corridor, because we have that issue with those two single restrooms at the back of that facility. And with the addition of the, that the weight room, you now will have visual coverage to that hallway on the exit out of the building, which is something we don't currently have now, which has been a security issue. So it's really not, you're making the, the weightlifting room much bigger. We're adding restrooms, some of that space, and we're just adjusting it and then providing some, some window space for security.
Yeah, and I, I think that two points to reiterate there, it's really just a matter of bringing Byrd up to the same standard as the other high schools in the county. And I think that that's, the school was built in nineteen sixty-nine, and some of the facilities that we'll be replacing were put in in nineteen sixty-nine, and that was the last time they were touched. So it's going to be a, a huge improvement. There have been about six additions onto the school in renovations over its lifetime, and we're hoping that this is going to be the seventh, but it's, it's a real hodgepodge of aesthetics, different bricks, different floor finishes. And so our idea was that we really want to make it very cohesive and feel like you, like it was a school that was built all at one time.
If I remember correctly, off to the right, doesn't it go off to a bank or a gully or some, some drainage over on that side?
Back at the gymnasium.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So.
Right here, you're, by, by the time you're to the, to this side of the gymnasium.
You're actually up, about a full story. There's, there's on-grade access at the top of those stairs, and then it pretty steeply flows down to the third right here.
Okay.
And we had drainage issues we just fixed a couple of years ago in the auxiliary gym because of that.
Yeah, I thought I remembered it. It was flat, and it was running into the gym or something, but.
They got that fixed.
And then another feature here, the original, the original entrance to the school will create an outdoor dining and, and learning space, but also provide access. I think most of the parental drop-off and car drop-off takes place in this circle right here, and so this is also the view that you see primarily from Washington Avenue. And so wanted to make that prominent. We'll show you a couple of pictures here in a minute. The other kind of interior renovation that we're doing, currently the library is here, guidance department is here. We're going to flip those, put guidance here so that they're adjacent to the administrative offices, and then move the media center here, so that kind of all large group activities, the English department will, will be right there next to the, to the media center. And as Troy mentioned, we're adding these additional restrooms up in the cafeteria. Currently, they don't really even have restrooms that are really close and accessible from the cafeteria, so that'll, that'll help a lot, just in terms of, of discipline and organizing things.
Yeah, so a couple notes too, that now we'll be able to get the, there's gonna be an access for the guidance counselors into.
Admin.
Our two thousand and ten renovation of offices right there. So that'll be nice to put those together, and then.
The connection between where the band room is over to the.
Science wing.
West wing, yeah. Like there's, there's no connection at all right there currently. It's just outdoor, and there's no security features. That's a huge traffic load.
And because of security, yeah.
They've got a wrapper.
I mean, I might have done that, but yeah.
Yeah, that made quite a difference at K Springs when you had that, those offices next to or right across from it, you saw that. And it, that really made a difference, so that was a good swap.
It, it, yeah, I think it's, I think it's going to make it a whole lot easier and really more secure for the staff as well. So here we've created a new rear entrance from, from the parking lot, which is through this breeze way that's currently there that they don't use. We also feel like it'll be a, a much better way to search, be able to circulate around the school instead of having a lot of dead ends there. We'll also be creating a new hall of fame along this cross hallway that connects the front and the back of the school. Upstairs, we have a major renovation of the science classrooms. I think the last time that they were, that they were renovated was sometime in the early nineties, late eighties. And so they will be very similar to the ones at K Spring with the combination lab and, and lecture spaces. We're actually taking the, the former art rooms, repurposing them into science areas and then doing art studios and additional classrooms here on the second floor. Upstairs above part of the media, we're creating a new office center for the seventeen sped assistants. We're kind of, right now, are scattered around the building, are working in closets. And these are the two upper, upper spaces for the cheer and wrestling gym and the weight room. Also, as part of this project, we'll be replacing the last portion of roof that was not previously, was not previously placed. So this is the new proposed front entrance to the school for the drop-off. Have a series of, of kind of outdoor spaces, which could be used for classrooms, could be used for additional dining, but most importantly, some good access along this ramp that'll get you up into the school from this area. So you're no longer kind of scuttling in from the, from all directions. And I think it gives a, a good, a memorable image that you'll see from Washington Avenue. One of the requests was that we pick up some of the details that, from the school that they already liked, and then you may recognize this is a little bit of the same language from the portico that's over by the, the main entrance in the administrative space as well as in the cafeteria. This is the reconfigured front lobby. The idea is that they could use it for collaboration space. It's a senior, it's a senior space. We have a little platform here, which for lack of a better word, is kind of the selfie station, because we know the pride of school is a really important point to work with. And so it's got the William Byrd logo there, some upgraded floor finishes, and you can see that we're going to run ceramic tile up about five and a half feet on the walls of all the corridors to give it that, give it a really durable finish, but also kind of cohesive look throughout the school. This is just looking the other way. We have some sun shades that will go across those windows on the outside to stop some of the glare. I've been there at nine o'clock in the morning, and it's blinding, so. But that's kind of what we envision, and you can see going through those doors for the, the covered outdoor space. Media center. Again, we have very low ceilings there. They can't be raised because it's a very short floor-to-floor height. But we wanted to give some visual interest, and the way that, and a fairly inexpensive way to do that is to play with bulkheads on the ceiling to give you a lot of movement, a very up-to-date look, and then also providing different floor finishes, carpet, luxury vinyl tile, that will give it a, a nice upgraded look, and some soft seating along with study areas, so that we, we're hoping that, that the students will really enjoy going to that space and, and doing the research, but also have a good flexible space for additional testing rooms, et cetera.
Is it handicap accessible from the front?
Yes. We have a ramp that comes up right here.
Oh, okay.
It runs here and then makes a, makes a turn onto the.
And in the next slide, where is your elevator to get up to the second floor?
So we have, there's an existing elevator that's down this hall, and then the other one is down towards the administrative wing. They felt like the, that location for the new elevator would serve that entire side of the building, and that that was probably the best, best locate, best kind of central location.
The school, if you're handicapped, need handicap accessible or need the elevator?
We'll get back to first floor.
Because we. Well, it's not the main, and no, you have to go down the, what was the front of the school, I guess now?
Yeah, at one time, this was the main part of the school, the school ended here. This elevator, which is right here, was, was added as part of the nineteen ninety some addition.
Seventy-seven or ninety-eight.
And so by putting the elevator here, you've got a lot of egress coming in here. It's also very close to kind of the large spaces, the large public spaces that might be there, the gym and the, and the auditorium, the cafeteria.
More media center. That was just more media center.
Yeah, and then this is a, a really rough look at that two-story infill in the, of the arts infill. Say, it's a two-story space, but with light monitors above to bring, again, natural light into that, into that space. And then this is the wrestling cheer gym. Again, maintaining some of the windows that are already in the school, but again, some light monitors that run down the length of, down across the width of the building. We'll also be able to sh, to store both wrestling mats and the cheer mats in the ceiling, so they're off of the floor. And you, you can then use this for other, for other purposes as well, after prom or watching game films or something like that, too. So we wanted to make the play, the, the spaces both flexible and, and full of natural light. And this is a typical science room. You may recognize these science tables from K Spring, very similar. Again, a kind of a combination lab and, and lecture, lecture space. I think that's all I have, if you have more questions.
As much as, it's more like a comment, as much as I love K Spring High School and the way that was done, one of the things that, that I noticed, and I think even Troy, you might have noticed, is the, the lack of electrical outlets. In the spaces where kids put their lap, there's a lot of really nice shelf space in, in the hallways, and there may be an electrical outlet every six feet. That just doesn't work anymore, does it? So.
Well, we got plenty of clocks.
Yeah, so, so now's the time to over, over outlet, if you can, right?
So what, what we've done, and I'll, and I'll back up a little bit and just say, this is probably, I mean, I, I could not imagine a better process with better folks than Tammy and Travis at William Byrd. We've had more than a dozen meetings with staff that Tammy and Travis have coordinated. We've hosted them at K Spring, like the whole science department came, came to K Spring, and we'd walk through the science labs, and they were like, we don't like this, we really like this, we need this to be like that. And that's what we incorporated into William Byrd drawings. And it is abundantly clear that there's not a teacher at William Byrd that doesn't highly respect Travis and Tammy. And it's been, I mean, it's been a great process. And so to that end, we have, just last week, we met at a sent engineering's office with the entire IT group from Roanoke County and went through the data plans, the electrical plans, and Tammy and Travis are going through all of those now, making sure they have outlets and data ports and camera locations and everything where they want them. And, I mean, having lived at K Spring myself for fourteen months, I know there was a lot of stuff that was, was not designed into the, the design, that we came back and either added, or it's just not there because it was too late to go and add it when it was realized. And we have done our very best to try to eliminate all those same kind of hurdles at William Byrd.
Good, thanks.
By, by including everybody from Roanoke County. Like I said, the IT folks from, from the physics department, I mean, we had every department come in, and like guidance, for example, they brought their own floor plan, knowing the space we were giving them. I, I mean, it was, I've never experienced that before. It was, it was unbelievable.
Good.
And this has been, I, I think, a real good team process between us and, and Avis, because they could go out and explore the ceilings, make sure firewalls were, were where we thought they were, and, you know, just giving us some preliminary ideas on, on how it might be structured best, working through some schedules. And so, yeah, I think it's, and having the lessons learned from K Spring, I think's been very helpful. Chris and, and his staff have been great as well.
Yeah, and we, even so far as furniture, having a meeting just about furniture and furniture placement and going through the whole school and all the plans and locating the furniture where the furniture's gonna be, so then you can relocate the, the outlets and the data and what phone, you know, what wall the phone's gonna be on and things like that.
This is the first project we've done with a design-build model, right?
Yes, sir.
And I look at the efficiencies, in my view, that you achieve doing it this way.
Oh, absolutely.
How streamlined it is, the input. It's a no-brainer to do it that way.
It's been a wonderful project.
Troy, Troy, you did a great job with what you had.
Thanks.
That's all I'm saying.
You saw me out there morning, noon, and night and weekend.
I saw you there, yeah.
How much of the, the existing flooring at William Byrd, will, will a lot of that need to be replaced, or is that in pretty good shape? I mean, you, you mentioned, you know, trying to bring in the new and, and match it with the old, I mean.
I think the problem with William Byrd, the original school had terrazzo flooring in it, which over time, and particularly with the renovation, most of it has to be either trenched or changed or removing walls, and so, and then there's a hodgepodge of terrazzo flooring and then VCT in other locations. And so we, we, I think we finally made the decision that, that we'll just cover everything. The only thing that could have been maybe done would be the, the terrazzo in the, in some of the quarters. But again, you don't have that consistent look that's going to say, this is a new school, everything is sparkling and.
And we're taking a lot of those lockers out that are at, along the classroom, so when we take those out. So when we take those out, you'll see VC or terrazzo that's not finished. So in cases like that, it'll just be easier to put, you know, unfortunately, put VCT over it. And so the majority of the floor will be replaced.
But terrazzo was, that was what everybody.
It'll be here fifty years from now. Yeah, it's, it's great.
And yes, sadly, it's a lost art. There are very, there's nobody in the valley that does it. The last time we did it was about eight years ago and they came in from Raleigh and did us all, all projects, so.
How many lockers are we keeping? You mentioned, I mean, it seems like, you know, lockers are kind of slowly dying, but, you know.
So Candy, Candy was very particular of what locker she wanted and where. Because of, I think, between the weight room and the gymnasium, she has some lockers that are tall for lacrosse sticks and things like that. And then she had some other lockers that will be too high.
They're, they're all singles. And they're all oversized with the idea that she'll assign them to off-season sports.
Right around the gym.
Right around the gym and that area, perhaps some to band members if they need to put their instruments in those. But, so we'll have about a hundred and eighty lockers whenever.
She didn't want the load lockers with the countertop like we did at Cave Spring. She wanted taller, bigger lockers that she could use for sports equipment stores for off-season sports. And, and again, that's some of the input that you get when, when you're meeting and meeting and talking about these things that, that you get from various teachers and other people at the school that's always helpful.
Is there a space for like students can come and gather, you know, like a lounge type space?
That's that front lobby, I think is what we're, that we're thinking. There are also some collaboration spaces and some stair areas that are not, that have not been utilized. And there's also a new, that new rear lobby between the science and the band room. Areas that they could, you know, just kind of hang out. We have some charging stations along the quarters. That's a combination of seating and a desk area where they could set their laptops up.
I've even seen the teachers have a breakout session, they've gone out there and do sessions with the kids, so.
Yeah, so we, we've, we've created a few of those along the, along the quarters where we thought that they would work, but not be real disruptive.
Yeah, and we are, we're actually eliminating one corridor at the, in the tech ed area. We're eliminating that and adding that space to tech ed. That was one thing in meeting with them that is some work that wasn't initially thought of in the RFP. That once we sat down and met with them, we're making two larger teaching rooms, a tech, a cab room and a tech ed room. And then obviously where all the equipment is, is getting all the lighting, dusting, dusting closure and everything.
And we're also helping with some safety conditions that they have there as well with emergency cutoffs and.
They repurposed the upstairs room that kind of goes back in there where we had classrooms. And if there was a fire, now I think it's going to be some kind of sped or something, offices or.
Yes, the.
So at least you won't have kids back there.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was, that corridor was dead end and it was very narrow. And so we're going to blast out all of that and that will be really a non-student area, but it's really just an open office plan.
So now I'll do the million dollar question, how much is it going to cost and when are we going to get done?
A million dollars?
So we have, we have eighty percent plans that are out right now and we are expecting pricing on the eighteenth. We'll have a few days to get some, some things together and put them in order for Chris and we'll send those to Chris. You know, everybody wants me to guess it. I think our original budget was somewhere in the twenty-one million dollar range. I can assure you, it's not going to be a twenty-one million dollars. It's going to be somewhere north of that and I cannot, I couldn't throw a dart and guess where the price is going to be. I was telling Chris, we priced the project about four months ago. A fourteen thousand square foot, for the most part, an office space. We priced it again and it was two hundred and fifty-seven dollars a square foot. We priced it two weeks ago, it was four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. The exact same project, just four months later. You know, lumber's up over two hundred and fifty percent just this year. Fuel costs are up a hundred and eighty percent. And when fuel costs are up, it costs more to run the plants. It costs, you know, and then, you know, OSB with Cave Spring, we were spending about seven dollars a sheet for OSB. Right now, a sheet of OSB is going to cost you close to forty. We were buying two by fours at Cave Spring for under two dollars a piece. And Chris, you were saying, you just looked at them and they're nine, they're nine now. So we'll, we'll hold our breath on the eighteenth and see where we come in. And to that end, on, on the schedule, we had, I had initially wanted to start in the lab space. Because in my opinion, that's the most difficult space to do. You've got a lot of rough ends that will need to come in from the, from the floor below. It's going to be very complicated to kind of quiet that. So I wanted to hit that really hard this summer and focus on trying to get those back on board as quickly as possible. Started talking with various lab casework subs and our lab equipment folks, like a hood. Casework at, and I, and I don't mean to compare everything to Cave Spring, but that's sort of the, the last thing that you can compare to. So at Cave Spring, from approved shop drawings, we were getting lab casework in about twelve weeks. We were getting the hoods, I think the hoods were taken like three to four months. Today, lab casework is twelve to fourteen months to get from approved shop drawings. And it takes a few months to get the shop drawings. The hoods are going to be closer to fourteen to sixteen months. And of course, the contract, the contractually, the schedule's only sixteen months. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that we won't even have if we ordered it today, we wouldn't have by the time the project's supposed to be done. Bar joists at Cave Spring were taking us anywhere between two and four weeks to get. We've got, we placed an order for bar joists for a project two days ago and we're being told forty-three weeks for just regular bar joists. And you can go over to New Millennium and look. With the tower that Corillian is doing right now, they have gone over to New Millennium and have paid a premium to get in front of everybody. So everybody else is in second place behind that project. And all of our bar joists come from New Millennium here locally in, in this region.
One of the things that you can get out of team building that, that we talked about was looking at some alternative structural systems. But there's really not anything that's.
More efficient.
That's out there that's more efficient and that's really doable for the, for the loads on the floors that we have.
So, so what we're going to do schedule-wise, if you can envision the building, we're going to start on the right-hand side of the building and those classrooms. So for every trailer, we can take out two classrooms. So we are going to start basically on this side of the building where we're going to be down to some demolition, floor finishes, wall finishes, new ceiling tile. And we're basically going to migrate that direction. It's all the long lead item stuff that's going to be mostly in the labs. We're going to order all of our bar joists. And when those arrive over a long break or a long weekend or a break or whenever, whenever those arrive, we'll mobilize a crane and then we'll swing the bar joist over for the infill areas.
Troy, is the material shortage just COVID-related?
No, no.
So it has nothing to do with factories and?
It's, it's, it's a lot of things. I mean, it's, it's not only COVID-related. For example, the glue for the OSB is made in China, you can't make it here. So we send, we send shiploads of pulp over to China. They then make it into boards and then they say, who's the highest bidder? You know, we, you know, I was, I won't get political, but there's a lot of things that occurred with the new administration that, that kind of put the, you know, gave China the upper hand again, if you will. So like the resin plants, there's a couple of ti, there's a couple of resin plants in the world. One of them is in Texas and it was shut down and is still not fully opened back up since the high storm. And the other one is overseas. So they're talking about allocation for PVC, CVC PVC pipe. There's already some minor allocations in drywall and metal studs happening. We've got projects right now that we've been awarded that we have told the subs to order everything and have it here. And the owners are paying to store it in containers or on site.
So what's your timeline now?
I don't know yet. I really don't know. So, so we're getting pricing on that team. Once we have pricing, we'll be able to firm up who our subs are going to be. Because right now, there's been no sub selection. We just got eighty percent drawings, we've sent them out for pricing. Once we have that pricing in, we'll, we'll negotiate with the, with, you know, maybe the one or two load bidders and secure them. And as soon as we have enough, an agreement on price, we'll lock them into a contract. And it, and it's only at that time that we can say, okay, well, how long to get this? You know, and that, and that's going to be for every, everything we need on site.
Is it, has the lock-in time changed for contracts?
Well, so, you know, this, this, we priced the, a project Friday, I was telling Chris. And the architect wanted us to hold the price for ninety days. We qualified that we will hold it for two weeks and we added a four hundred thousand dollar contingency to hold it till ninety days. Because we have no idea where the prices are going to be in ninety days. I mean.
You might have undersold yourself with four hundred thousand.
Right, right. And we didn't get it, we weren't loaded. But, you know, so can't get them on.
We've done our best in the design and specification to pick items and methods that are, there's nothing unusual. There's not a lot of fluff in this. I know that our interior designer has looked at tile, all of the finishes that, that she's specifying, make sure that they're readily available. So it's not like we've got something really exotic that we've said, oh, everything now is exotic.
Right, so, you know, for example, you know, and even, even for Chris, honey, I've been communicating with him. You know, we'll need these areas cleaned out. We're going to go in here and start renovating them as soon as we can, as soon as we have a contract price agreed to and, and a price. And then he's, he's going to move everything out. And I'm sure his furniture is going to take longer to get now, too. And then he's probably going to be moving old furniture back in before it's here and then have to move out again and then put the new furniture in it. And I can see that probably happening at least halfway through the project. Because I don't, I don't know how long your furniture is going to take, but I can't imagine it's the same timeframe as it was at Cave Spring.
I'm being told November. So when we order all the, all the school classroom furniture, if we were to order that in by June one, we're looking at November before we get classroom furniture.
Of the following year to be able to.
I'm sorry.
So you're saying November of the following?
No, November this year. Yeah, we're looking at about six months, five, six months.
Okay.
For, for school furniture.
For school furniture.
Oh, so it's not as bad, okay.
Two, two months.
You know, we're like the lab furniture, the top special, you know, and then just, just the way it's designed, it's all kind of custom.
So in thinking this through, and I don't even know how this would work or how it would play out. Maybe Don's done this before and had this issue. Would it make sense if we had to secure the product? If we're looking at fourteen and sixteen months for some of this stuff, would it make sense to move back six months to start? And then that would really finish us at the end of the school year anyway, but maybe.
I, I would not recommend post-pending it because I just, you just don't know where the prices are going to go.
No, I get that.
And, and you don't know if the lead times are going to get worse. I would say as soon as we can lock in a sub and gets the middles approved, we tell every sub to order the materials and get them here as quickly as they can. Even if that means we have to pay for storage somewhere for a month or two. I'd rather have it here and in town and accessible than all of a sudden find out hoods are going out two years out.
You know, and some of the material shortages have nothing to do necessarily with even, with China. Amazon is building hundreds of facilities for obvious reasons. They're sucking up a lot of the steel. Texas had all the damage in their ice storms, so they're sucking up materials coming into hurricane season.
Yeah, and they're saying by the end of this year, by the end of twenty twenty-one, that the construction industry will be, will need a million more employees.
Wow.
And, and a lot of it is, is being caught, you know, obviously, we, we're all fairly intelligent and read the paper. So we know what's going to happen July one. And as soon as, as marijuana becomes legal, I mean, obviously, I can't have somebody under the influence of marijuana working at William Burr Middle High School. And so, you know, that, we'll be drug testing more often, we do it every quarter now as it is, we'll probably go to maybe even monthly. I mean, it just, everything, it just, it all goes downhill. And, and I mean, I've already had employees and, and friends who are at other construction companies say, yeah, but it's going to be legal. What are you going to do to deal with it? But I mean, I can't have them on any school project, I can't have them on any project at tech, I can't have them on any government project we're working on, whether it's legal or not.
No, surely.
Yeah.
So is the current plan to still start July first?
Yes, so right, right now, our current plan is to have trailers showing up, what did Tammy say, June seventh, maybe? Sixth or seventh, first of June.
First of June.
And try to have those trailers mobilized by July first. That means that gives Chris at least a month to get temporary power set up and everything he needs to do to those trailers.
Fire alarm.
Fire alarm.
Who will get them from now? Who's, who's furnishing the trailers?
We are.
They're furnishing.
We're furnishing the trailers.
We're not in the trailer business at the time.
Yeah. Y'all got out of the trailer business.
Thank, thank goodness. We went to, went to U S Tim and I thought, oh, no, we're not going to.
No, no, but he, he's going to do power, data, things like that. We have, we have trailers and we have decks. We have trailers and decks at our scrapyard.
We had to have the superintendent over there spreading rock.
He told me he wasn't doing that.
Is he part of, is that part of the contract?
I'll do it, but good grief. Chris and I, I mean, anyway, we won't do that.
Give it to Troy, Troy's got it coming.
Any other questions or?
No, I don't have a question.
Mostly, you know, me enough that, I mean, I, I, I shoot it straight, I'm pretty black and white about everything. I don't hold any, you know, anything, any cards to my, to my chest.
Well, I like to know where we're at, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Grandwell, I'd like you to, we've been really open with Tammy and Travis and they know that we're not looking at a finish date of December twenty-two now. They, they do know the plan, you know, that, that year.
Well, that was the reason for me asking.
They, they know that we could be extended into that following summer of twenty-third. They do, they do understand that.
And, and we've, we've even talked, I mean, we know that, you know, if we, when we finish these areas, Chris and Tammy and Travis are going to need some time to move in before we can go take more classrooms. And there, there's just going to be a lot of coordination. I mean, you have to.
There's, in, in my view, and I think we've already, we're already there, there's no reason to delay this thing at all because it's only going to get worse. Think about what's, what's out in the pipeline, there, you know, there could be a federal infrastructure bill. And if that passes, look at the amount of construction that's going to be done there. There could be a lot of money towards school facilities being built. So there's more in the, you want to get in line as soon as you can.
Right, I agree. I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah, I agree. The only thing I'd like to say is that related to this is thank you all again. But, you know, we're in this situation and I appreciate what you said about the foyer and the, you know, the William Burr, the sign and being prideful. To me, that's what this is all about, is, you know, having pride in your, your community, your school and having a nice facility that you can be proud of. And the kids can leave and want to come back and show and even move back to that community to, to show. But for whatever new boards come on that, you know, fortunately, we've got five good members. You can't let this happen again. We can't let facilities in, in one area get so depleted that, you know, between that and Kunda and, and we just can't let that happen again. And it doesn't matter which area.
Or piecemeal things together anymore, I mean.
Just can't, yeah, and, and so that, you know, y'all referenced several, a good point several times that, you know, there was an addition, an addition, an addition. I call them Band-Aid, Band-Aid, Band-Aid. But for the very reason that Tammy's the principal of that school, she, you know, with this project, she's the right person for our.
She is, she's the gym.
Yeah, so, you know, we hit a, I think we hit more than a home run there, so.
Well, I think when you had a plan, like you were in a plan and you did a facility study, and I know I was on it, but still, you did a study and you just follow that plan. It's when you get out of sync in the plan, you know, that's where it really messes up. And then you, then if you just fix part of it or do part of it, then you, then you move on to the next one and then all of a sudden, whoa.
Yeah.
And so we got to go back and that's not the way we should do it.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, Chris, any of you ever have any questions, I mean, feel free to, to call me. I mean, I'm, again, happy to talk anytime about anything, so.
We appreciate you.
Do you have about eight million dollars we could borrow?
I'll ask my wife.
Smart man.
Any other questions for Troy or Earl?
I know the quality of work and what you did over at Cave Spring was just really great. And so I know you was over there every time I was over there, so, and that's why.
And that's what it takes. I mean, you know, you talk about pride in the school, I mean, even though I'm, I'm from Salem, I mean, it's still every project I do, I take personally, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate y'all.
I'm good.
Thank you, I'm sure.
All right, we'll move on to next item, the request for approval of ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety. Two hundred and ninety dollar contribution from Health Reserves to O P E B Trust, Mrs. Peterson.
There she is.
Hello.
I'm here today just to request the transfer of funds out of our health insurance fund to the OPAD trust. As you know, we have provided employee benefits to our retirees for them to stay in our health insurance plan. This provides an implicit rate subsidy to them. That also pays for their health coverage. And according to the accounting rules, we do have to record the liability on the books. And we entered into a trust a few years ago in order to build up funds to pay for future payments out of this. And so I'm just coming here to share this with you so we can get it into the board docs for the next meeting.
Gotcha. Any questions?
This is no different than what you, you know, to add these, to change these funds. I believe down this is.
It's, yeah, it's the same as always.
Yeah.
And we do build this into the premiums. And so it's not like this is unbudgeted. This is budgeted. It's just not overtly in our general fund or anything.
Okay. All right. No questions? Thank you. Thank you for the speech. I appreciate you. Do we, do we wanna do this next one or just do I have a motion to?
Do we have dinner?
As long as he keeps it to the same length Susan did.
We love Mr. Williams. So, Mr. Williams is going to give us an update.
You saw what Susan just did, huh?
I, I did. And I want you to know that you've been spared me for a long time and it's sort of pent up. It's all pent up.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
That's a weird dude, aren't we? Just don't ask Jeff to help you.
Well, you know, I, I, I've said that, that I'd, I'd take my presentations over Jeff's any day of the week.
So Mr. Williams is.
At least I do it myself. Have you never seen Jeff always just somebody talk for it?
Comprehensive and strategic plan.
Matt, Matt, introduce us, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, our comprehensive plan is something that was adopted mostly by our previous board a number of years ago, back when, when I was in instruction. And this is, you know, continues to evolve. When, when I became superintendent, one of the things that we did in retreat setting was go back over what we call our C-change framework to affirm that these are still our strategic priorities in terms of aspirational goals, what we believe about instruction, what we believe about having a balance between, you know, having accredited schools, but also, you know, schools in which kids are engaged with, with what we call deeper learning and then all the pieces that go around that. And so I've asked Mr. Williams, along with our friend Dr. Eastwood back here, to work on a revision of our comprehensive plan to set us forward for the next several years. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Like Dr. Nicely said, we, we're here to build the future. You know, you, you're talking about building buildings. We're talking about the whole division. And one of the things that, that state law requires us to do is maintain a, a long-term plan that, that essentially sets forth where we wanna go long-term with our division. And, you know, that, that's something we take seriously. It's not something we do just to be in compliance with, with state law. But it's, it's something that, that, you know, without a direction, the, the school division is gonna flounder. The school division's gonna essentially go off in different directions, but we're never gonna move forward. And so, so it's important to, to, to have that direction and be really thoughtful about who we wanna be as, as a division. And we've been working on that for several years. Wanted to point out, this is our old comprehensive, what we'd call our comprehensive plan. It's from the, the last major revisions, twenty-fourteen, although it gets changed about every year. And it is a big honking document full of one point, one point, one point ones and things like that that ends up basically, you know, a little dusty, to be honest with you. It's a little long in the teeth right now, a little long in the tooth. And so, you know, we really wanted to reimagine our comprehensive plan and make it to something that, you know, is a little more alive and a little more relevant to what we're, we're doing. And, and maybe bring some color to it. And you can see Chuck's done some good work with a draft. What you're seeing, you're gonna see today is really just the ten thousand foot overview, not getting into the weeds and the details of, of what we've done on this. I, I could go probably sixty, seventy pages in if we wanted to do that today, but, but I doubt, I doubt that's really what we wanna do. What I wanted, want to do today is to give you a concept of, you know, where's the division going? What, what is our, our ideas for the, for the future? What are our ideas for the future? And, you know, does that align with, with your own vision? I think that's a, you know, a real key piece here. And this is really the product of work that's gone back to about fifty, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. And, and we've had lots and lots of stakeholders involved in building this out over time. So, so you'll see that, you know, our draft marketing here goes along with the, the seeing clearly, because a lot of it's talking about our C-change strategic framework. And, and we've got some introductory information. But what we go to first, and it's something that was missing from the, the previous plan, is we get into our guiding documents. What's our mission? What's our vision? And into documents that we've been working on for a while, like our Runup County Profile of a Graduate. Our Profile of a Graduate tells us what do we wanna produce? You know, we're, we're, we're a, you know, we're an organization that produces something, you know? It's not something you can hold in your hands, but it's, you know, it's, it's something that's just as important. You know, we, we produce, you know, the kids that are going, gonna go on and, you know, be, be our dentist and work on our teeth and, you know, pay taxes to hopefully allow us to retire in, in the luxury that we deserve. And, you know, this is, you know, we're, we're building our, the future of our community. And so the, the profile of a graduate talks about, you know, what are the, you know, what are the pieces that, that go into that? What do we want our graduates to be able to know and be able to do? And you've seen that before and you've seen the, the Runup County C-change stream, framework as well. But this really is, you know, having the framework is, is huge for us. Having the framework is, basically it gives us a foundation to go from. Let me tell you the way this, this used to roll here. When we worked on the comprehensive plan in the past, it was organized by department. And so each department essentially said, this is what I'm doing. And a lot of times they put down what they would've been doing anyway. And so, so each department essentially independently, without talking to the other departments, you know, would set down their goals, make their plans and go off in whatever direction they're going off in. But it, not necessarily was it cohesive in taking everybody in the same direction. And so what we've done is by having the C-change framework that Dr. Nicely has worked on, you know, quite a bit and he really has invested a lot of time in, by having this, this overall framework, we're able to take this document and say, how do we operationalize it? Because this is our aspirational document. This is what we want to do. How do we then take this document and, and make it real? Make the things that are aspirational here into something tangible that really happens. Into students that, that become, you know, models for what we're trying, for them to become. So, so we've got that, that foundation. That's, that's a huge piece and it's different than anything we've had before. So what we did is we organized our new strategic plan. You'll notice there's a change now between the term comprehensive plan to strategic plan. You know, it's just a, it's kind of a branding change, but it's just, you know, a little bit more modern, a little more, yeah, a, a little more of, yeah, focused. We are being strategic here. Comprehensive, it made it seem like you wanna put everything you've ever done in it and, you know, have a document that's ten thousand pages. Strategic plan is we realize that we have finite, finite resources, we have finite time, you know, finite space, et cetera. But we have to be strategic about those things and make sure that those things channel to what's important. And so what we did is we took the different parts of the C-change strategic, of the C-change framework and, and turned those into, and you'll see the different parts are here on the left. We turned that into a one-pager. And that's, you know, for folks that have been around this division for a long time, we've never had a one-pager that we could hand out to somebody and say, boom, this is who we are and this is where we're going. This is what we're doing. And that's what, what we're, we're trying to do. Now, this is very much a draft. But what this one-pager does is it tells us what we're, you know, what's our C-change strategic framework? You know, what are the pieces? What are we trying to do? And then what are those goals that go along with it? Those broad goals that go along with each piece? The things that we're gonna do to make those things real, to make the different parts of the C-change framework real. So if we look at, for example, balance and deeper learning, we're talking about students will demonstrate opportunity-ready skills as outlined in our Profile of a Graduate. We're talking about students demonstrate a high level of achievement as assessed by multiple measures. Maintaining full state accreditation, that's the balance piece. Meeting the academic needs of exceptional and minority population. So they're broad goals, but we've got strategies under each of those that, that if we wanted to flesh this out farther, we could. I mean, it's already built out and we've got pages and pages on, on strategies there. But the good thing is, is those strategies are all linked to our mission, our vision, our strategic framework and bringing us all in the same direction. That means if we've got a department that's going off and doing something different because they have to, maybe a law changer or whatever, that doesn't make it in this plan. You know, it's something we just have to do. This is the plan that's gonna take us from point A to point B and, and, you know, to, you know, bring all of our resources to bear on that process. So, so we've taken a lot of time, the stakeholders' time, a lot of teachers, a lot of parents, a lot of administrators, business leaders, you know, we've, we've taken a lot of time from folks to, to get their input on those, those guiding documents. And, and this is sort of where it's leading us. And so, so I'm excited about the, the, the change there and direction in that, that I think you'll find this is a far more focused document when we get to the, the final product. So, like I said, this is where we're going with it. And just to give you an idea of what the, what a full product would look like, I've got Goal Two A here. And Goal Two A deals with positive behavior interventions and supports. And you'll, you'll notice something that the old plan didn't have. Strategies already implemented. So the first thing we do when we get to any goal is what have we already done in relation to this? So that we can, we can give credit to, you know, to the work that's come before. And, and as we complete goals, as we, as, as, or strategies probably more likely, as we complete our strategies and say, this has been done, check that box, instead of it going off into the ether and disappearing, it's gonna go into our already implemented list. And we're gonna have new strategies that replace it to take us from point B to point C. And so we've even changed the format to go to one that will allow us to add yearly updates a little bit easier. You'll see Strategy Two A Two here. Procedures established for classroom expectations and routines, et cetera. You know, who's the facilitator? What's the financial impact? What's the baseline data? And as we have yearly updates, we'll add those in as we go. So, the, another thing that we were taking into account when we did this is many of us several years ago did Baldridge training, which, just to give you an idea of what that is, it's the Baldridge Performance Excellence Program and the US government runs this. Basically, it's a performance excellence program that talks about best practice in terms of guiding an organization, in terms of strategic planning. And so we tried to make sure that everything we did was Baldridge compliant, to make sure that we were following best practices in this. And the neat things that, that, that that brings to us is that's not just education. It also brings in, you know, all different industries, you know, and how they do things. But it raises awareness about the importance of performance excellence, provides assessment tools, et cetera. It, it provides examples of best-in-class organizations. You know, so who are the, the, the top performers in the education realm and what do they do? So that we are able to essentially make sure that what we're doing matches what, you know, what, what, again, the top performers in our industry are, are doing. And, you know, that's, you know, something that, that we wanted to keep one eye on and to make sure that, that we're not just going off and, on, on a tangent that's, that's not tangible and, you know, not worth our time. This is definitely going to, to be in compliance with that process. So, the, let me go back over to the one-pager. That's what, what you've had in your handouts. And you'll see that, that the positive behavior, the PBIS piece is, is a really big piece for us. You're gonna be hearing a lot about and you already have heard a lot about. You're gonna hear, be hearing about, a lot about professional learning communities, PLCs. You know, that is a way to drive professional growth, you know, in terms of our, you know, learning culture. You know, it's not just about what we want our, our kids to learn and the skills and the content, et cetera. But also, you know, what do we want our environments to be like? What do we want the, the teacher-student relationship to be like? What kind of supports do we wanna provide the whole child? You know, those are things that, that really matter to us. And so as a division, we're not look, just looking at, at, you know, the numbers. We're not just looking at the academic piece, but we're also looking at the whole child and making sure that, that their experience is one that, you know, is nurturing. Their experience is one that, you know, is positive and, you know, leads to, you know, not just academic growth, but personal growth as well. The, the only piece that is not in the, the C-change framework that, that we did add is a resilience piece. Going through the COVID situation that we've had, you know, we know that, that resilience is, is pretty important. And so, you know, if we do have to, to punt and, and make alternate plans, you know, do we have the, the, the structures in place to, to do that in the future? And so, so we're just having that resilience piece so that we have a, a safety net to fall back on if we ever, you know, need, if we ever need it, essentially, is, is also a piece of the, the puzzle. So.
How, how deep are you guys considering going into the Baldridge criteria? Have you thought about doing a Baldridge self-assessment?
We have done that in the past. And, you know, it's, I, I, I think that is something we would like to do in the future. And, you know, we have a, we have a Baldridge expert here in Chuck Lionberger who actually used to do those assessments.
I was, I was an examiner for SBQA.
My organization won it, so I'm, I'm familiar with it.
One of the things that we found at Ben's point is, you know, as we've attended those trainings, you don't often find educational organizations taking part in those kinds of things.
We were kind of an anomaly that we showed interest in doing things that way, but I think it is the right, right approach.
Oh, it is.
Just to, you know, imitate best practice in terms of how do you, if you wanna move forward, you gotta be focused and you have to build a plan to get there.
Along the lines of Mr. Buss's, the measurement, what are we measuring? Are we, we're the, you know, how do we come about that analysis, you know, for our measurement? And are we still buying, is it still a package with Baldridge or is it, you buy it once and then you?
We, we don't have a, a current form.
Yeah, we don't have a, a for, a formal relationship with, with Baldridge right now. We're really just trying to make sure that we're, we're sort of in, in alignment with that process.
So you modified your system, your, our system to that.
Exactly, exactly. And the, and in terms of, you know, measurable outcomes, our goals are a little broad, but our strategies are, are specific and measurable. And so, so, you know, we'll, we, every strategy we have is measurable. It's got baseline data. And you'll be able to see the movement in those strategies when we give you yearly updates, which we intend to do in the mid-fall. updates, which we intend to do in the mid-fall, usually in the, the late October, early November timeframe each year.
Is there, is there sort of a quality-of-work-life component to what you're looking at, too?
You know, there's a, there's a piece that does get into, let me pull that up, that, that gets into, one, just the professional growth, but also support tools and services. We get into more about the, you know, trying to bring in a, a staff that, one, you know, really unders, you know, really is enriched by the, the learning experiences they have, et cetera, but also a staff that, that is more diverse than we currently have. But in terms of, you know, the, the benefits and those sort of structures, probably not as deeply here. I mean, I think that certainly is something we could look at in terms of-
Yeah, we're, we're out of head and I, and I know Ken and I have talked about this, you know, many times, is that when you look at high-performance organizations, you, you've got an employee body and a base. And so, so what, what is the culture that you want to have in your organization? And is there any change in that culture to get you to be a high-performance organization? And so that's something that, that our company, which was a huge company, went through, and we went from sort of a monopolistic militaristic organization to actually engaging with the people who do the work. And guess what? We found that that really works. And so-
One, one of the things is woven, you know, first of all, in terms of, you know, the domains, when we talk about the climate piece, which has a lot to do with respectful environments, you know, safe environments, those kind of things, but also the learning culture, you know, in terms of what Ben's alluding to, in terms of just, you know, as teachers, when we're turned on to learning and we love learning together with colleagues and we have that kind of environment going, by the way, that's contagious to students, right? They, they see the value in collaboration and so forth. One of the, one of the things that Ben alluded to, that's woven into the fabric of this, that we're, we've gotten good at in pockets, but we're not good at consistently across all schools, but we're getting ready to, to relaunch this, is this idea of professional learning communities. It really goes to the heart of what you're talking about. When, when folks collaborate and they respect each other and they have meaningful conversations and dialogue, and they feel empowered to, to make changes in their, in their piece of the world, that's, that's a very powerful thing when you've got people operating under that model. So that's something that i, is really woven throughout, and we're committed to, to make more and more meaningful in all of our schools.
The other piece that, that you'll see in other industries that you don't always hear about in education that is different as part of this, is that you will hear more about customer service focus. And, you know, that's something that, you know, again, you don't think about customer service in a governmental organization, but, you know, that, that's who we are and what we do. We serve our community and we serve our, we serve our parents, we serve our kids. And, you know, really measuring, are we, are those folks happy with what we're providing? And what can we do to provide a better experience for, for our stakeholders?
You know, we've got 26 goals apart. It's, how do you measure with everyone that's involved? I mean, you've got principals, you've got everybody that's maybe doing a little things differently. How are you going to measure each one to come up to the standard?
All right. So there's, there's a couple of things that we, that we can do and we're looking into. One are, you know, a series of surveys to kind of see where, where each, you know, each place is in terms of their, their development along the path. Another thing that we can, and there's, there's, there's also some self-assessment tools that we can do. Another thing that we've already started is that, you know, we've had principals, you know, taking their, you know, aspects of the strategic plan, building it into their own goals, so that they're able to do some assessment of, okay, well, I'm doing, I feel like we're doing this well, we're, we're, you know, maybe, you know, this is something that, that maybe I need to grow in. So that then becomes a personal goal for me as a principal, which then becomes a goal for my school, and it trickles down in terms of the goal structures that we have as part of our, as part of our evaluation systems.
See, see, each school, not only is we have a division plan, but each school has their own school, localized school strategic plan. And one of the keys to that is to have everything in alignment. That's what, you know, Ben's getting at there, even with, you know, principal personal goals. So one of the things that we've done in terms of changing the conversation is when we talk about these things, sometimes, you know, in the past, this becomes this sort of ancillary conversation that happens, okay, it's time to have that meeting, it's time to get that notebook out, and let's look at it. It's got to all be woven together and integrated and be part of the conversation. So when, when, when we have conversations with, with, with principals, even about, you know, looking at, you know, assessments and that kind of thing, you know, what are, you know, what are, how are students doing on those kind of things? It's all with, those conversations now take place within the context of their strategic plan versus it being this sort of, you know, thing on the side over here. When, when principals come in for their, you know, end-of-the-year goals and that kind of thing, and then we have those mid-year meetings, that's just all woven into that conversation. So I think that's the key to your point, is everything has to align. Because if everything's in isolation, everything's operating in silos, that's where you get into, you know, this school over here doing something that has nothing to do with, you know, where we're going in the school division, so.
And when our instructional team goes out and meets with principals periodically, you know, we've changed the focus of those meetings quite a bit. There used to be a lot about assessment data, and assessment data in school and student growth is still part of that. But, you know, the, the real key is how does that come together in terms of your, you know, your strategic focus? And so we, we've, we've changed those meetings quite a bit so that we're having discussions about their strategic plan all year long, so that it's not an end-of-the-year document like Dr. Nicely said. It's something that we are periodically monitoring and helping, you know, folks through that, helping them overcome obstacles, et cetera.
So you said, so you've got a new comprehensive strategic plan. I'm assuming that's more of an updated of what we had, or is this a new?
It's, it's a, it's a major revamp of the plan, of the, of the plan that's been, you know, really been refined and worked on for decades.
Well, so you, so you honed in and you said it several times in your message of the whole child. Does that come from this past year? Because I harked on that for the first three or four months of this pandemic, and I just wonder if that's part of where we're taking this new plan.
You did, you did a good job because you, you, you hired somebody who was already thinking about that before the pandemic ever began. And Dr. Nicely was talking about the whole child before, before COVID ever came. You know, back when, you know, he was pushing for the, you know, the additional counselors, et cetera, before, before we ever had COVID. And, and so, you know, so with, that was something that was, to be honest with you, already on our radar, and it would have been part of this plan regardless, but COVID accentuated that, that need for it, certainly.
Well, to your point, Mr. Green, it's more important than ever, right?
Well, it's absolutely more important now, yes. Yeah, so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. All right. So we'll, we'll have a, we're going to basically take this out as a next step to, to get feedback from a larger audience and, you know, maybe get, have some, we have to do at least one public hearing on this, and we'll be back in touch with, with that process.
What's kind of your estimated time in a perfect world?
We'd like to have all the I's dotted, T's crossed by, by the fall. Probably mid-fall.
Very good start.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate you. All right. With that being said, no further questions, meaning adjourned.